It's nine o'clock, and before I call the meeting to order, we've got a special guest here today. So I'd like for the commissioners and Kelly to join me at the podium. And also if David Cowan could join us. It's one that, you know, when we're children, you just can't wait for your birthday. And then there's landmarks, you know, 16, 18, 21, 62, 67. But you know, the older we get, the less significant they become. And it just soon counted as a day and go on. Fortunately for David, he's in that borderline. But we wanted to wish David happy birthday today on his birthday. But then also take advantage of the moment. And back in March, April, when the COVID started, we thought by now we'd be through it. And in the beginning, David had started organizing daily conference calls to keep everyone updated. And a lot of work has gone into keeping the city prepared, keeping us notified. And one of the things that had happened, David made sure that the city was prepared for emergencies such as this, that we had a stockpile of PPEs, masks, that we were actually able to help other entities that were short. And it was in his preparation. So in honor of your birthday, and also wanting to thank you, because we're still going on dealing with COVID. And David's spending a lot of time researching and getting information to keep the city safe. So on behalf of the commission, and also our acting city manager, Kelly Passour, we want to wish you a happy birthday, and also for our appreciation, David. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Can we do a picture, Dean?
I was gonna ask you the same.
Do we have the echo taken care of? Oh, okay. Good.
Hit star six on that one. Star six. Okay. Says hold. Susan, can you hear us? We want to make sure you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Okay. Yep. All right. They're gonna start the meeting now.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So now I will call the meeting to order. I do have a revision from the agenda. I would like to move item B of the executive session to the first order after calling to order. So with that, I move that we recess for an executive session for review and discussion of city manager applications pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception. The open meeting will resume at 9:25 a.m. in the Civic Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Thank you. We're back in session. A little over a year ago, July 17th or 16th, I believe, they, we started a search for replacement city manager, for a new city manager. It was an interesting time because looking at the tasks that was ahead of the commission, we also had an election for a new commissioner. So during the time, even while Commissioner Hogsett was in action, Dean stepped in to the process as we went through making plans to fill the position. We approached the search a little different. We looked at the questions that had been presented for us to use and determine for the application process, for the interview process. And through many executive sessions, we came to the conclusion that what we need to do is look what independence needs. We want a city manager that we felt would be specifically serving the independence's needs. And to begin that, we commissioners started talking, what direction do we feel that we felt the city needed to go? How can we find a city manager that would meet and work towards the goals that we were seeing necessary for independence to have for the future? And, you know, as everything changes, it seems one of the standouts is we felt we needed to look beyond our city limits, look at regional, how independence can become a regional contributor, partner closer with our surrounding communities. And through the months, we secured applications for interested parties. We analyzed the response, the resumes. We visited with finalists to share our dream. Because what we were wanting to develop with our city manager is a team that we could sit down and share goals, share dreams, share visions, share problems, and have foreheads coming together to set the course for the future of independence. And then that the city manager would oversee all the actions to complete what was necessary to provide the best community for our citizens. Going through the 13, I think maybe 14 months, actually, we saw that there was one candidate that was fulfilling a lot of our goals, that was stepping out ahead of time. And we saw an answer to our search. And we began visiting more direct, sharing our goals and our dreams, and getting to the point of, is this something that you can work with us and we can work with you, that we can support each other, that we can dream together for the future? That what we wanted to do was set a course for the city that following commissions and following city managers could take the community in that direction. One thing that it seemed like in some of the interviews, each candidate had a lot of potential, had different styles, had different directions. And we're trying to look to consolidate that we could go in one direction. And through this, there was one candidate that we felt would meet all the goals and was willing to take on the responsibility. Because what we're seeing is going through the COVID crisis, the pandemic, and other situations, that we need somebody that can remain solid and with good direction. So today, this will be one executive session concerning non-elected personnel for the discussion of city manager applications, that we will have action taken. And I would like to announce that that candidate that we have offered the position, and we've come to a point of negotiation, is Kelly Passour. So the action taken today would be that we finalize our search for city manager. So at this time, I will call for a motion.
I move to authorize the city, the mayor, to sign an employment contract for the position of city manager with Kelly Passour. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Kelly? The commission, we're excited to begin work, and this will take action immediately. So do you have anything you would like to say, Kelly?
I probably have a lot to say, but we don't have that kind of time. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I appreciate our great staff, our great community, our business leaders, and everyone that's been so supportive. And I just appreciate the opportunity, and I can't wait for us all to get started and work towards the future of independence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. And one other item that during the last 13 months that Kelly was acting as acting city manager, she was acting in the same pay scale as she was as assistant city manager. And the commission, in the past, has always compensated for the additional responsibility that was taken on during that time. So in looking at compensating Kelly for the additional responsibility and work that she has for the last 13 months, we use the same basic factor that was used in 2017 to determine compensation for that time. And we came up with an adjustment for Kelly. So with that, I would call for a motion.
Okay. My motion is I authorize the mayor to sign a personnel action and payable change for the period July 15, 2019, through September 16, 2020, for the acting city manager. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, items for commission action. Consider recommendation from the Economic Development Advisory Board regarding a business incentive.
We have Tricia Perdán is going to present this item.
I was still holding out that Chuck was gonna join us virtually, but I know he had another meeting he had to be in. So thank you very much. I am representing the Economic Development Advisory Board in the capacity of the ex officio for representing Montgomery County Action Council. But we are pleased, we've had several conversations with LaBette Health and the Economic Development Advisory Board to talk about the expansion that they presented to you just a few weeks ago. In past commission discussions and other information regarding incentives offered to LaBette Health by the City of Independence, the Economic Development Advisory Board reviewed a cost benefit analysis, which should be in your packet. And I'll go through that here in a second. To determine the appropriate investment in the proposed project as relates to the City of Independence. And they used that new program that the city approved just recently as well to provide that context. First of all, after the review of relevant information provided, the EDAB recommends approval of the incentive request in the form of $250,000 as a forgivable loan to be dispersed over a five-year period as follows. First, LaBette Health will show proof of five new full-time equivalent employees in Independence during 2022 over a base employment established at the end of 2021. LaBette Health, Independence Healthcare Facility, must maintain those five FTEs, full-time equivalents, over the subsequent years to receive the maximum of $50,000 per year. Should less than five FTEs be maintained during that reporting period, the annual incentive payment for that period will be discounted on a prorated basis. Second, the first payment will be made on March 1 of 2023, and each March 1 of the four subsequent years, 2024 through 2027. Then third, this incentive will be paid out out of the proposed special use sales tax renewal, of which 5% is to be designated for economic development. Of course, this incentive is contingent upon the passing of that special use sales tax renewal. So with that, the Economic Development Advisory Board recommends the city attorney draft an agreement, and that the city commission approves the proposed incentive to LaBette Health for the expansion of LaBette Health, Independence Healthcare Center on Peter Pan Road. In case you have any questions as to how the Economic Development Advisory Board came to that conclusion, there were two pages that were provided to you in your packet. They look like this. The first one, if you look at the top green boxes, at the very top of your page, is the one I'm talking about, says 4.23. That is regarding this incentive in particular. Does not take into account the previous incentives that were provided to LaBette Health, Independence Healthcare Facility. And I will talk about, in my experience, working with several of these cost benefit analyses with businesses all over the county, and working with the Kansas Board of Tax Appeals when it comes to industrial revenue bonds and things like that. They really don't want an incentive to show cost benefit analysis of less than 1.3%. In this case, with this specific incentive, you see 32.3% return on investment for the community of Independence. So it's a very, very strong incentive proposal. However, the Economic Development Advisory Board also wanted to make sure that they took into account the previous incentives. And so pulling those two together to see what this proposal would look like, the ratio for that one, combining everything, is still 14.25%. So still far exceeds the absolute minimum of 1.3 for a return on investment for the community of Independence. With that, I will answer any questions you might have on these.
The previous incentive I've taken is you're talking about the $200,000 was given?
Yes.
Which was given to buy equipment. It wasn't given as an incentive?
Right. But still, it was money paid out to the organization, and so that should be factored in.
Yeah. I noticed that, well, of course, when Brian was here, he was requesting significant more than $50,000 a year. And looking at, I think, well, first, it'd be nice to have the information that he submitted to review to see what his data was, instead of just the recommendation. Because, you know, when you look at the healthcare, you're looking at incentives for employees, but yet, he's providing something in service that affects a significant portion of the community, citizens direct. It's not like a manufacturer coming that's gonna manufacture products and ship out of town.
That's very true.
So it's a little hard, you know? If you're gonna look at an employee incentive, all the tables work great. But when you're looking at a healthcare entity, it's a little different. You know, and I guess initially, when we started all this with Mercy closing, the commission had approved getting a bond for $3 million for St. John's and CRMC. And there was no incentive evaluation to that. It was just done realizing the need. And I think in healthcare, maybe we need to look a little more at fulfilling the need as important as healthcare is. So, you know, I would like to see what support data that they submitted so that we, as commissioners, can be up to date with everything that the advisory board has looked at. Because $50,000 a year for five years, you know, I don't think that's appropriate for the type of facility they're bringing here. And, you know, to compare where we actually bought a piece of equipment as incentive is accurate either. I think you can't relate the two. That it was a need that they had for, I think it was a CAT scan. And we gave them $200,000 specific for that piece of equipment. So, you know, I would like to see that we're furnished the data that was submitted with their request, review it, and then come back to discuss this at a later time. Commissioners?
I'm in agreement with your comments. I would like to see the data.
Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. To me, this incentive seems fair and consistent with what we've done in the past. It does, of course, incentivize, to some degree, the addition of the space at the healthcare facility. Many incentives of this nature are given to businesses that are fledgling in nature, and that to bridge an unprofitable period of time so that they can get their feet underneath them and get going. So it can stabilize their presence in the community. LaBette is stable and profitable at the moment. So this type of incentive is less directly linked to their ongoing success. So it is consistent with what the level of investment was the first time. And so I'm not against looking at additional information, but it is less important to LaBette Health as an entity that they get this compared to such, let's say, less profitable or fledgling entities or industries that we might want to incentivize at a future date. So, thank you.
So can we get copies of what was submitted, Kelly? And let us look it over, and then we'll come back to this later date.
All right. I will say in my conversations with their CEO, Brian Williams, he did say that urgency is very important because they're trying to finalize all their financials. So I think the sooner we can get it on the next commission agenda, the better.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B is consider a request from Main Street to utilize a city parking lot located at the southeast corner of Chestnut and Eighth Streets on Thursday from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. from September 17, 2020, through October 29, 2020, for a fall farmer's market.
Good morning.
Tabitha.
So the farmer's market closed at the end of August. And this year, with the new moving it to that parking lot, and the vendors they brought in, it was just a great asset to our downtown. Everybody really enjoyed it. So we thought, how can we keep that momentum going? And there's been a lot of discussion about doing an afternoon-evening farmer's market. So I went to Terry Trout of Annie May's and asked him if he would mind if we took one side of that parking lot from about 2:00, after his lunch crowd went out and blocked it off to bring in those vendors, and then utilized the grassy spot between that parking lot and JT Maloney's, or whatever it's called now. And he was very happy with that. They do right now close at 2:00, but he is going to, if allowed, he is going to keep open till 6:30 to accommodate the farmer's market because business was so good during that time for him on Saturday mornings. And so then I went next door to, I think it's Southeast Kansas Works. They park in that park. And so I asked him if they would mind when they came back from lunch, parking on the other side of the parking lot. And they said, oh, no, that's fine. There's always a great time. And they were excited to get off work and be able to stop through the farmer's market. So we've reached out to several vendors, and I think if allowed tomorrow, we would have about 10. And I think it'll just grow from there. We're kind of, we're not really sure about the times. It's getting darker earlier, and I'm not quite sure how well that parking lot is lit. I keep needing to drive back by there and see. So that's why right now, we're doing 3:00 to 6:30. If it's busy and it's staying lighter, I think the vendors, as long as they have product, will stay open a little later. So that's why I said 7:00 on there, just in case they decide to stay a little bit later. So that's what we're asking for tonight. And like I say, I've already visited with the business owners in that area, and they did not think parking would be an issue.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes, any questions?
I'm good.
Commissioner Yussisi?
The one question is on the motion. It says from 2:00 to 7:00. You had mentioned 3:00 to?
Yes. I just said 2:00 so we could have some time to maybe, if there was a car there, to find and get it out before. Because I would hate for them to come out of work and try to back out of there as the farmer's market is going on. They would more than likely be stuck there till 7:00. So 2:00, from 2:00 to 3:00 would allow us time to track that person down and try to get him out of there.
All right. No, that was the only question I had.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize a request from Main Street to utilize a city parking lot located at the southeast corner of Chestnut and Eighth Street on Thursdays from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. from September 17, 2020, through October 29, 2020, for a fall farmer's market. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tabitha. The next item on the agenda is consider adopting the following resolutions and authorizing the signing of the following forms relating to the CDBG grant application.
We have Susan Gilmore with the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission on the phone to cover this item.
Okay. Susan, are you there?
I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So these are gonna be the forms that are gonna be submitted with the CBG grant application for the sewer improvement project. And I apologize, I had them brought up. Here we go. These are gonna be all the standard forms required for all CBG projects. The two main ones are gonna be the two resolutions. The first resolution is assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of the improvements to the sewer system. And the second resolution is just certifying legal authority to apply for the application. And then the rest are standard HUD forms. I'd be glad to go over each one of those individually if you prefer.
I just had a question about one of the forms, the residential anti-deplacement and relocation assistance plan. I think looking at it, maybe the intent of this is, should the project displace a low-income or moderate-income housing, that they would be replaced somewhere else in the city so that we're not reducing the number of low-income or moderate housing? But it's not saying that we're gonna do anything with housing. Is that correct?
That is correct. So when we use this form for a project that doesn't involve housing, if you go down towards the bottom of the form, right above where it says, as chief official of the jurisdiction, there's a comment in there that says, no occupied dwellings will be demolished with this project. And so that's where we input, that's where CBG looks for our input on what we're doing with this particular project. And so that then lets them know that they can move this to the stack that does not involve housing.
Okay. And with this project, where we're replacing sewer mains, we're not gonna be affecting any housing anyway, but this is just kind of the standard, let's cover everything form?
Yeah. It's a required form for all HUD projects. No matter what activity you're doing, you have to provide this form. So, yeah, so we just designate that we will not be demolishing housing with this particular project.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Commissioner Yussisi, did you have any questions?
No. That answers the question I had.
Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
Okay. Well, if we have no- Well, if we have no further questions, then I'll call for motions regarding the resolutions.
Okay. I make a motion, I move to adopt the following resolution and authorize the signing of the following forms and any additional related form regarding the CDBG grant application. Number one, a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the sewer system to be financed with Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Okay, have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the next motion, a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the 2021 Kansas City Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number three, determination of level of review.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number four, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan under section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number five, statement of assurances and certifications and?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And finally, item number six, applicant recipient disclosure of date report.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I think that concludes everything relating to our CDBG grant application. So, thank you for your help.
You're welcome. Have a good day. Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, next item, executive session. For item A, executive session for the purpose matters relating to security of a public body or agency, public building or facility, or the information system of a public body or agency, we will go into session and due to that nature, this, the statute allows this discussion to be held privately. So there will be no recording or broadcasting of this executive session. And so with that, I will continue with the motion. I move that we recess for an executive session pursuant to the security exception KSA 75-4319B13 for matters relating to security.
I second the motion.
Meeting will resume. Where's, Jer, how long?
You said three hours, didn't you? How long?
About two and a half.
Two and a half.
Two and a half. So we'll return to session at 12:30?
Mayor, could we?
11:30.
Could in between this, could we? Five minutes.
Yeah.
It'd be 12:30. It's almost 10 o'clock now.
12:30.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second, it's already been seconded, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We're back in session and from the executive session, there is no action. Commissioners, I would like to have another executive session, if you're in agreement with it, for non-personnel or non-elected personnel.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
I'm good.
Okay. Then I move that we recess for an executive session for non-elected personnel exception KSA 75-4319B1. And we'll be back in session at 12:40. And going into executive session, I would like the commissioners and the city manager. So that was a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're back in session. There's no action from our executive session. So with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.